Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the April 13 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home. We have a, the first item up today is something that we actually discussed at our last council meeting and just needs to be voted on today. That's the ordinance concerning low-income housing property tax exemptions and the adoption of the resolution. So I'm going to ask the council president to put it on the table.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5047 concerning low-income housing property tax exemptions and amending sections 2.916, 2.920, 2.938, 2.939, and 2.940 of the Eugene Code 1971.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor? Eight in favor, none in opposition. It passes. Next motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 5028 adopting amended standards and guidelines for processing low-income housing property tax exemption provisions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No one in the Q. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you all. Now we go to the major item of the day. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry about the cough, everybody.
And I'll turn over to Sarah to kind of introduce the topic. From our perspective, staff perspective, we're here to either listen or try to answer questions as we can. We do not have any particular presentation to make.
I would just echo the same thing. It looks like you have a presentation that some of you are going to give today. We had added in the AIS some of the questions that I think came up out of your meeting around what are some of the potential land use issues that may come up during the process for any of the proposals. And so Steve Nystrom is here. We put together a summary. As we go through the discussion, we can talk about it. I just want to, I'll probably want to continue to just say this is really very preliminary. It's hard to know what exactly will come of any one of the proposals based on what we've seen so far, knowing that each and every one of them could potentially change, will likely change, elements might be added or taken away. So we really just tried to give you a quick hit of it, but don't want anybody to think this is the final word by any stretch.
Okay. I'll just start the conversation out by, just for the public, to say that the instruction was that the council asked with the, if the school district was in agreement to bring together the three applicants for the civic property, along with some counselors and a couple other folks, and then have a discussion about whether we even put together the civic property with one of the other proposals that were out there. And it says here in our AIS that the council recognizes the value that historic properties contribute to community character and livability and is aware of the needs of 4J School District. The committee would explore a possible public-private nonprofit collaboration for the repair and repurposing of Civic Stadium and the redevelopment of the rest of the site. And the committee met on April 8th, and it's, here it talks about that Counselor Brown and Counselor Zelenka, Counselor Farr was invited but was unable to attend their representatives from Save Civic Stadium, Master Development, and Eugene YMCA and friendly area neighbors. And I'll just go through, I have to say that everybody was very respectful of everyone else's proposals and participated with goodwill. They clarified the values of all of their proposals. They were at, we had a sort of a roundtable of asking for ideas of, that people might have for combining with the civic projects with the civic property. The folks who were there from the Y and from Masters, Master, basically their answer was short. They basically said, "We're always willing to talk when the city has its skin in the game." I guess that was the gist of the response. And George and Alan, I think you can agree with, that was pretty much what they said. And other reflections that we heard around the table from other people was that they were looking for the best utilization. Some felt there was something valuable in each of them, but they didn't all just hit it just right. Our neighborhood representative expressed a notion that people tax themselves for this property and it should serve some great public purpose to strengthen community. The Y noted that the city has been involved, not involved is probably the wrong word. They have had numerous conversations with the city over time, with city staff about their proposal. Masters indicated he was willing to keep an open mind. And I've since talked to him about even ideas about moving Civic to nearby city property. So that's pretty much the gist of the conversation. And I know that both Alan and George want to make some comments. And so they're the next step. Which one of you guys is?
One of the boardroom.
Yes.
Our presentation today, is this from the subcommittee or the staff or just these two?
Just us two.
So this isn't a response to the council motion? Do I have that right? They just want to make a proposal to us?
It is a response to the council motion.
The council set up a subcommittee, was my understanding.
It did.
So this is not the subcommittee's proposal?
I think what would be fair to say is that they, the counselors that participated met with the, and listened to the other folks, and then they used that information and they have a proposal to bring forward that they'd like for you to consider.
My understanding of our agenda was that it was a review of what the subcommittee was putting forward. So if, I find it interesting that what we're actually getting is then just the idea of two counselors. And that wasn't what my understanding of our work session was today, but I'll listen.
All right.
Well, it's two counselors and the Save Civic Stadium, one of the proposers has stated.
So we didn't work together with the other two?
The other two are going, they declined. They declined to propose any ideas, so that's why we had to go forward.
Forgive me, the only reason I bring this up is because at the time of the vote in our last conversation, I made very clear comments about the fact that I didn't think it was appropriate for us to weigh in on just, with just one of these proposers and short-circuit the 4J process.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly. Neither did I, or George, or I think the mayor. And what we asked of 4J was, in particular, was, "Would you be willing to hear from us? And would you?" And they said, "Yes, we would," from the city of Eugene. And would you, and they said, "Yes, they would, as long as you stay within the process and within the timeframe." And we're doing exactly that. Both the timeframe, which has been extended a little bit by 4J, we didn't even ask them to do that. We asked them, we told them that we'd stay within the context. They moved that out to June 1st.
I went to that meeting.
Right. So you know that they did that on their own, so they moved that out. And so then they also said, "If you revise one of the proposals, any proposal can be revised until the last minute." And so the meeting that we had with the folks with Masters and the Y was kind of scope out, see if any of them were willing to revise their proposals jointly with the city of Eugene, and only the civic people were willing to do that.
So this is your two's recommendation on how the city jumps in on the side of Save Civic and revises their proposal?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And so, do you want to, are you starting the conversation?
One point before we start. We have a couple of folks that are going to join us on the phone, but they, were thinking we were going to start at 12:30, so hopefully they'll be able to join in early. If not, we'll just catch up to them.
At the time.
At the time. And who we're going to have on the phone is the President of the United States Soccer League. He's in Florida. He graciously offered time up to talk about the potential of a soccer team in, professional soccer team in Eugene. And so he's going to join us, hopefully not too late. I sent him an email that said, "We already started." And then Nate Jaquah, who's actually a local boy done good, who's now a professional soccer player for the Major League Soccer team in Seattle, the Portland Sound, or the Seattle Sounders, to talk about soccer in this area.
I think George Paul would like to make.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the way this work session is going. I'm kind of like Mike, was expecting to hear a breakdown of the group from the subcommittee instead of a proposal by two of the counselors. And also, I think we're breaking away from the way we conduct work sessions by letting somebody other than staff participate. I know we've done it in the past, but they were on recognized organizations of the city. And by allowing citizens to come in and participate in work sessions, I think we're stepping way beyond our normal operating procedures. And I'm just not real comfortable with this whole process at this point.
And we just got this at the table. We haven't even had a chance to review the materials.
Right. And we're not asking for any decisions. So we're asking to hear what this preliminary proposal is, to have a conversation about it, and to be open to hearing a different way of thinking about this proposal that the city might weigh in. If at the end of this conversation, the city council decides they don't want to weigh in, then we're done. If the city council feels that this is an idea that has some potential and can move forward, then I think we'll move to the next step, which is bring back some more details. But what we're trying to do today is kind of present the vision about what this potentially could be, something that I got pretty excited about. So we want to present that to you, have a conversation about it, and see where the city could fit in.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand, this does seem a little irregular, particularly the part of having someone who's not a council member participate in the meeting.
Well, I'll have some presentations too, I'm sure, as we go forward.
It has been done. You know, and I think, I'm a little less uncomfortable with the process than has been stated by my fellow counselors. I, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing what's going to be said and allowing it to be a part of the decision-making process. But, and having said that, clearly, this is a decision for school district 4J at this point in time. And I don't think anybody around this table believes it's our decision.
Right. Thanks.
So, yes, Counselor.
Thank you. So I was going to kind of say what Pat said about, "It's not our decision to make." And I do think this is kind of backwards. You know, it would have been nice if this would have, could have been done in a different way, but I'm willing to listen because out of respect for my peers, I think that it, they did some work on it. And, you know, a lot of people do work on stuff, can imprison, bring it to us. I'm just thinking of an email I saw about Otto.
Petisha.
Petisha, and how he did this wonderful presentation. And we said, "Thank you very much, have a nice day." And so basically, I mean, we have that opportunity here if that's what comes of this conversation. So I'm more than willing to listen.
Counselor Farr.
Not much more. Just that, you know, we requested 4J to take a little bit of a step back, to take a broader look at things. And I'd like to appreciate my, express my appreciation to 4J for doing such. You know, at this point, they've done what we asked them to do. And a little bit more information, I think, is going to help me personally to understand what their options are, not what my options are, what their options are.
Thank you for all of that. So unless anybody has anything else, we'll let George begin.
Okay. Can, oh, there it is up there. Okay. I just wanted to go over a little history of the acquisition of the Civic Stadium. I mean, we're all fairly familiar with it.
It's one of my pushbacks.
A little review would probably be okay. 1938, in January, the city council referred a levy, half mil, to ballot to raise $6,000 to purchase the 17 acres, original size of the Civic Stadium site. One thing a lot of people don't know is on that same ballot, the voters also approved another half mil levy to purchase 280 acres on Spencer Butte, what later became Spencer Butte Park. So it didn't get logged and it didn't get developed, and we have this wonderful park up there. That was the same ballot measure. Once the ballot passed, and actually before, the Eugene citizens collected around $5,000. Work started in July. They needed it over to District Four, School District Four. The first game was played in October, during a terrible rainstorm, really muddy. Oh, they were on, you know, you talk about a fast track, that's a pretty fast track. January to October, boom, it's in the stadium. It was all done at the height of the Great Depression. It was kind of just past the height, perhaps. It's kind of just tipping the other way, and there was a feeling of great optimism in the town, actually, reading the newspaper articles. People were optimistic. They thought it was going to be over in not too many more years. But unemployment was still about 25 percent. So, you know, the area was in pretty bad economic conditions, and yet the citizens came together and passed two wonderful ballot measures.
So a lot of people think that this is just about saving the structure of Civic Stadium, which is kind of a limited vision about this whole thing, and I think not what we're talking about entirely here. It's a small part of it, but it's an integral part of it. Initially, I was skeptical about that plan. How do you save the stadium? What's the plan? How do you move it forward? And as I learned more, I started to get more and more excited about this broader vision about a community and family sports complex around the stadium. And really reinventing the Civic Stadium today, that makes sense for today as opposed to what made sense in 1938. And so what we want to walk through here is kind of a vision about what this could be for the community and some of the benefits and how the city might play a role in it and how this actually makes sense from a business perspective. So you need to reinvent Civic Stadium in a way that builds community. And so it, and the elements of it are that it's a sports complex. And we'll get into more detail about that and what that means. But it's also a gathering place that could be for festivals and concerts and community building. But it also includes a new professional soccer team instead of a baseball team with a new field associated with it. And an indoor field house. There are no indoor field houses of any substantial size in Eugene. There's one out in Springfield, way out there on Main and.
Thirty Second.
Thirty Second. That's the kind of field house we're talking about. 4J, or kids' sports would love to be participate in helping make that work. So the, it's an indoor field house as, so those months of the year that it's kind of raining and cold, which seems like it's getting longer and longer, especially this time around, this time of year, it's an ability to have a whole bunch of different events go on in that indoor field house. We could also have potentially the Y participate with their building on this site if it worked out. And kids' sports is very excited about that and has put in letters of support for this proposal. There's also be a restaurant and a stadium for it and could also do festivals and concerts. Is this a point? So this, these two charts up here are visual demonstrations of what we're talking about. So that they're, does this have a laser pointer on it? Oh, yeah. So this is the old grandstands, and this would be the new soccer field. And the old field goes kind of out this way, like that. It would be moved in, and this would be the new East Grandstands. This is the restaurant, and this is the field house. And the Y or housing could go on the back of the slot here. There's sufficient space there for them to be able to do that. This is a new scoreboard, and this is the soccer field, and these are little soccer players. You could see the scoreboard from this perspective and the new grandstands with, from the restaurant, restaurant clubhouse perspective. So the idea here is not, is to create a sports complex and a venue for a community gathering. And what that would do is actually preserve our history and also preserve the stadium, but also create economic development. This is probably a $20 million proposal with all the jobs associated with that, with some permanent jobs associated with it, 75 to 100 along with it. We, the folks have talked to Carrie Westlin at the Tourism, what's it called? Trespa County. And she's excited about it and is looking into how much it would actually generate and how much dollars it would bring in. I think the number is like 200, or $140, $180 per person that comes in to watch a sports event. And then finally, it has to have a solid business plan behind it. And that's what we want to talk to you a little bit about. So the business plan elements of this, what, how does this make sense? So originally, I was skeptical. Save the stadium, how does that work? Who pays for it? How does it pay for itself? And so linchpin of this is a professional soccer team. And it has all those facility improvements that we talked, that are up on those two charts. It also has a financing plan and a business case that we want to go through, and we talk about the city's role and potentially a Y or housing as a potential add-on to all of this. And we're going to go into each one of these in a little bit detail for you. So the soccer team is actually, originally, I thought, "Oh, sure, we could get a soccer team." But it turns out to be much, much more real than that. And a professional soccer team in Eugene is actually a real possibility. It is the, it is the most popular and fastest-growing sport in the world. It also is the most popular sport in kids' sports. Over 2,500 youth plus high school teams play soccer in the area, and it is the biggest program that kids' sports runs. And they have scant facilities to be able to do that in. We have a letter from, and hopefully we would get Nate Jaquah, who's a professional soccer player, a Major League Soccer player on the Seattle Sounders, on the phone to be able to address that, maybe do that in the Q and A part. The second part about it is that I think, I have learned that, I think George has become convinced, as we learn more about this, the more real this possibility could comes. Originally, I thought, "Well, heck, that's, you know, that's a nice idea, but is it real?" Well, it turns out that the United States Soccer League, which is the, there's the Major League Soccer League, which is the Portland Timbers and the Seattle team and the Vancouver team that plays at the Major League Soccer League, like Major League Baseball and NBA and NFL. And that's where Nate Jaquah plays. But then the league right below that is the United Soccer League, USL. And we've had conversations with the President of USL, who's actually in the East Coast, and his name is Tim Holt. He's going to join us by phone to talk about what the probability of a soccer, professional soccer team here in Eugene would be. And I've become convinced that it's not only probable, it's likely that you could, you could get one of these teams here. And it would be in part because both the Timbers and the Vancouver team moved up from the USL into Major League Soccer, and there is no professional minor league soccer team in the Northwest anymore. And they're desperately looking for someplace to plunk down. And so I think that is a very good, real possibility. The Portland Timbers also are very interested in helping this happen as well, and they've invited the council to go up to Portland and to their home game on May 6th. And obviously, we'd pay our own way, but they've invited us, them, to have a chat about what it would take for the city, and Save Civic and Eugene to have a professional soccer team. They're real excited about that possibility. It only makes their business better, and it also is a good possibility of them benefiting a lot from it. Anything to add to that, George?
Well, I'd just say that, not last year, but two years ago and the year before that, there were team friendly, so-called friendly matches. So a team came over from Italy, one came from Germany, one came up from Mexico, and they played here in Eugene against some of the local teams. And they were just, they were sold out, they were packed, there were like 2,000 or 3,000 people, and people were sneaking under the fences to get in. And so it's, it is, it is a real, it is a real phenomenon, the passion for soccer here, which is something I was not initially not. I mean, I see it with my seven-year-old child. He's, this is his second year. And almost his whole school plays soccer, at elementary school, boys and girls. And so I started understanding it, but it's, I'm starting to understand it. And of course, I've been watching World Cup matches now on TV, but it's, it's really quite a phenomenon here, and I've become convinced that we could easily have a USL team here.
I have a quick question while we go here. My daughter plays soccer too, so I agree with you, understand it's a big thing. I think you're right, thousands of people may come to events out there. I don't see on this particular mapping where they'll park.
Yeah, that is a big issue. One of the details we've worked out.
Okay, thanks.
And 4J can help with that. It's the same issue that they have associated with them's games. You know, that's a perennial issue that.
You're going to develop the lot where they park for them's games?
Yeah, some of it, right.
Okay.
Yeah, potentially not all of it. So the facilities improvements, the, these would be phased in, these are the facilities that we're talking about over here. So we would, the notion of the grandstands is an important one. There's been a lot of numbers floating around, you know, 10, 20, $30 million even about rehabbing it. The idea here is to, was come up when, if you remember the history of this, Marshall Glickman was hired by Save Civic, and actually the city chipped in $5,000 to help do that study. And his proposal didn't go anywhere, but it had a lot of good elements to it, including having Turner, which is a company that rehabs stadiums. In fact, they did PG East Stadium in Portland and other things. So they came up with a plan about how this would work. So this isn't, this is someone who's got credibility, has done numerous stadiums, understands the costs. They came up with the cost estimates and the plan of how this would work. The first part of that would be renovation of the historic grandstands. And the plan there is not to do what everybody thought we should do, which is to completely redo all the plumbing and electrical and all of that, but basically to rehab the stands part of it and abandon the other part of it. So that, and then put a, actually, a bathroom system that would be right back here behind the system, behind the grandstand. So basically, just refurbishing the existing stands and abandoning underneath stuff. Way cheaper option. To do that, then you need to have the East Grandstands, which is over here, be able to deal with more people, the locker rooms, the bathrooms, and other facilities that are needed in order to make this all work. So the East Grandstands is a big part of that, and that's the $5 million, 2.3 to do that. Then there's the field, redoing it for soccer and having it be a permanent turf field that can be used for a whole bunch of different kinds of events. And also the scoreboard, visual, visual scoreboard for it. And then also putting a restaurant or clubhouse over there, Stadium Club, that would be a draw on a regular basis, not just during games, but, and then an operations building associated with it, and the field house over here, and then, and then also over behind here, the park entryway to the stadium. And of course, a big, every good construction project has a contingency plan, contingency amount in it. So the total cost here is about $20 million for this. If the Y were to put their building right back here, which is where there's sufficient space, or we'd make sufficient space for it, that would be about a $16 to $20 million project as well. So that, that's kind of what it would take to make this into this community family sports complex idea. Not that much money, actually, relatively speaking. And I think within, it's well within what's doable for this community. The financing plan, the, again, what we're talking about today is kind of sketching this out with details to follow, but we wanted to kind of get your input at this point. But the financing plan is the same that we did for the Ridgeline Harley property, which is acquire it first and develop it later. This probably happened a little faster than that, but it's acquire it first, develop it second. There is a catch-22 here. You cannot secure any funding for the redevelopment of this, or even the development of, say, the East Grandstands or the, or the field or anything, without securing the site. So if you don't have the site, you can't get the money. So it's a catch, and you can't get the money unless you have the site. So it's a catch-22 that's plagued this project a little bit. So the, that's why the plan would be to acquire it first, develop it second, then you can work on it. And Plan A would be to do what the higher scoring proposals did, which was to lease, lease the, lease the facility, which would not require any upfront capital cost, and then with maybe a lease option to buy down the road. Plan B, and we can do a conversation about this, would be a purchase of it with the city. The idea would be that the, a nonprofit would own and manage the team, and then the facilities management would be, we'd still have to figure that out about who would be in charge of that, either this, the nonprofit using the money from the business plan from the soccer team, or the city and how that would play out, and it would be a lease to that nonprofit. So the sources of money associated with that are the soccer and event revenue, which is just quite substantial, actually. And loans, there's rehab and other kinds of facility, or loans that could do community building for up to $10 million that are, that are not only possible, but probable. Community fundraising, things like what we've done in this community over and over again, how we help fund the Holt Center, which is with the bricks. This would be buy a seat with your name on it, and things like that, so people could participate in it. The lease payments from some of the different folks that would use, or the user fees that would use the facilities would help offset the costs, and some foundation grants could And some foundation grants could be used for capacity building, for fundraising, and also for some of the associated capital improvements that need. And then finally, the city could have a participatory role as well. So, the business case is, everybody knows, pretty straightforward. You take your, you take your revenue minus your expenses, and that creates your net income. What, the business plan for this particular one is, and it's part of the handout that you got, both, it's called the, there's the business plan, and then also, there's an Excel spreadsheet called the funding plan. And basically, what that uses is pretty conservative assumptions about what would take place on the soccer, like 50% of, 50% attendance of the maximum amount. So, it's a 6,500-person stadium, and on average, there would be about 50% attendance. So, it's pretty conservative, and also, the prices are fairly conservative. So, but, and of course, like we said before, the linchpin of all this is that it's, it's the soccer team that makes this work. About 80% of the revenue comes to the soccer team. But, the result is, pretty positive cash flow. And I think actually, this plan could work. So, this is, you're not supposed to actually read this or absorb this, but this is, this is an excerpt of the financial plan that, hey Beth, the, or, the, Tim Holt's trying to call in, and he can't call in. So, this is the, this is business plan, an excerpt of it anyway, that shows where the revenue would come from, from the soccer events, concessions, and merchandise. You notice the concessions is a huge amount of money.
You don't have that, correct?
This is just an excerpt of this. This is part, it's in, it's in your presentation. And other events, but you can see the bulk of the revenue comes from soccer. And then there's the expenses, which is mostly operations, office, sales and marketing, and reserves and whatnot. But the bottom line is what actually is really the important part of this slide, which is that the net income on an operating basis is in the $700,000 a year. That's without a lease payment to 4J. So, out of that 700 could come the lease payment to 4J. And I think with those kind of numbers, and with the conservative assumptions that are behind this plan, you actually could create a very competitive lease payment that the other folks, the other two proposals did as well. There's more, a lot more rigor behind this, but this is just kind of a one-shot deal. So, the city's role, we've got two more slides here. The city's role could be, be a lease owner, be a financially backstopper guarantee, and lease to the non, a new nonprofit, the Save Civic nonprofit, we reconstitute it as a new board with community and civic leaders that are interested in this. There's a lot of people that are actually very interested in doing this. And that new nonprofit could be called Civic Stadium Works. And the city could also be a development, so they're helping make sure, make all this happen, could part of be the management of the facility and event programmer. And of course, what we talked about was, the northern parcel back here is still developable, so first right refusal will go to the Y, and second right refusal will go to housing. And Mr. Master could be one of those, the housing developers in that particular. The Y still needs, has two problems. They have to deal with the parking that Mike already brought up, but also need to talk about the development capital they need in order to build a 16 to $20 million building, and likely not be able to fit on the site, because the, the tennis courts are right in front of the goal of the, of the north, north goal. Let me, I've got one more slide, and then we'll...
Sure.
So, we would, the proposal would be, if this vision makes sense, that we would join with Civic Stadium, revise their proposal within the timeframe, within context, and within the process that 4J set forth. The hallmark of this would be a two-year lease with an automatic long-term extension if we meet some development standards. That protects 4J, and it protects the city. It protects 4J in that if we don't meet these development standards, and we can't make this project work over the next two years, then they get, then the lease terminates, and they get the property back, and they can do what they want with it. But it gives the opportunity to get all the Is and Ds, and Is dotted and Ts crossed. And it would include financial backstopping and with a competitive lease payment. And then, obviously, you need to talk about if we did a purchase. So, what we'd be asking of the council is, this was just to give you a flavor of it, if this makes sense, we continue to develop the details. And we could add Civic Stadium in this proposal to our April 25 public hearing, have people talk about it, and, but we'd need to come back with some more details about how this would work. And then, the presentation to 4J would be, I think they're tentatively scheduling for around May 16th.
Do you need...
Tim, Tim, are you on? For that?
This gentleman's calling him with the number for that.
Oh, he has the number, he said there's an, is there an access code? No.
He may have had one there.
Ah. Hello? Mr. Holt?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is City Councilor Alan Zelenka.
Mr. Zelenka, how are you, sir?
Your timing couldn't be more perfect, we were just talking about you.
Okay, I'm sorry that we're, that we're late, we got a little, we got a little disjointed on the timing and then on the call-in number, but I'm glad, I'm glad we didn't miss our window of opportunity here.
Well, we've, we've finished off our presentation, so we can come back to you for a real quick moment or so, and maybe you could introduce yourself, talk about USL, and not spend more than three or four minutes, but also, talk about the probability of a, of a professional soccer team in Eugene.
Sure, I'll try to give you guys the short version. My name is Tim Holt, I'm the president of United Soccer Leagues, I'm here with our director of league growth, Stephen Short. United Soccer Leagues is celebrating its 25th anniversary this year as the largest system of elite-level soccer leagues in North America. We operate seven different league properties. The pinnacle property that we have is a league called USL Pro, which is a professional soccer league with 15 teams across the United States and Caribbean, that is the strongest, most visible and best-operated professional soccer league beneath and supportive Major League Soccer in this country. Obviously, MLS, Major League Soccer has a, now has a very strong presence in the Northwest with Vancouver, Portland, and Seattle. All three of those teams came through the USL Professional League as those very teams and franchises with those very same ownership groups, and have sort of graduated, if you will, onto Major League Soccer. We've, with USL Pro now, the model that we're, we've adapted, and there's been a slight sort of reconstruction as to how we approach professional soccer, is more regionalized, so that there's not national travel, but regional travel, and with operating budgets for teams that are less than a million dollars a year. So, we're aggressively expanding into the West, into all regions, frankly. Most of our teams right now are eastern, east of the Mississippi based, but we're sort of led by our Los Angeles team, Los Angeles Blues. We have no less than a half dozen viable candidates for the 2012 season on the West Coast for a Western Conference starting next year. So, that's the very quick snapshot to stay within your timeframe and not bore everybody to death as to what USL does and has done for 25 years. We're headquartered in Tampa, Florida, we've got a full-time staff of about 24 people plus interns. In terms of the probability of bringing a team to Eugene, let me say very, very clearly and unequivocally, that we think Eugene would be an ideal market for a USL Pro franchise under this model in which we currently operate. There are certain things that we look for from any expansion candidate. One is the market, what are the demographics, what's the market size, what are the other sports alternatives and entertainment alternatives, is it over-served or underserved from a sports standpoint? We think, you know, Eugene, as Marshall Glickman's report, we think support is, you know, has high marks in all of those particular categories. We also need a proper soccer venue to play at, no less than 2,500 seats. You know, while I would say it's our preference that it be a soccer-first stadium, we have different styles of stadiums, but that stadium needs to provide a good fan experience, a good playing experience, and give the franchise the opportunity to be economically viable. And then, lastly, we look at the ownership group. The backing of the ownership group, its level of capitalization, and its commitment to build soccer in their community, and to do that in a way that we can rely upon for many years. So, based on everything that we know and where this process is presently, which still has a little ways to go, we are extremely encouraged by this, and really think that it has the potential, if things can move forward with the venue, and the ownership group, you know, can put the finishing touches on that, to be really a prototypical USL Pro franchise. I'll stop there, if there's any questions, we're happy to address them.
Thanks.
So, while we've got him on the phone, are there any questions, anyone that wants to...
Just numbers, Mr. Holt, the attendance for the home game, do you have an average number on that, based on historical numbers?
So, I'm sorry, my phone cut out a little bit. You're asking about attendance in USL Pro so far this season, or just historically?
Historically, please.
So, yeah, historically, it's a little difficult, because USL Pro, and I wasn't going to get into a ton of details, but is the, effectively, we had two professional leagues operating under the USL umbrella, one called USL First Division and one called USL Second Division. And USL Pro is essentially a merger of those two leagues into a single league. So, while I would tell you that, based on taking all, the average of all USL I and USL II teams historically over the last five years, average attendance is probably in the neighborhood of about four, just over 4,000 fans per game. I think our expectations are a little bit more modest than USL Pro the first year, where I think probably somewhere between 3,000 and 3,500 per game is what we anticipate. But keep in mind, there's going to be a variance there. We had an Orlando team, which played its first-ever match this past Saturday night that drew 8,000 fans. Our Rochester team will regularly draw 8,000 or more fans. But most of the teams, if you take a look and say, where are most of the teams grouped, they're grouped somewhere in the 2,000 to 4,000 range.
Thank you, good, good numbers, Mr. Holt. Another question is, around what do, what is the price of tickets average across the country?
That's a good question, and I think it's going to vary based on different markets. We're in Los Angeles and New York, where their ticket price is going to skew a little higher than it does in Charleston, South Carolina, and Wilmington, North Carolina. I think what we find for an average, just so I'm not giving you 35 different numbers at once, an average, a league average general admission ticket price to a USL Pro game is probably in the neighborhood of $12 to $15.
Thank you, just, I forgot to identify myself to you, I'm Counselor Pat Farr, Northwest Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Farr.
Counselor Clark.
Mr. Holt, this is Counselor Mike Clark. I'm wondering, could you help me understand, did you say that you have an ownership group identified for this market?
No, we do not. In fact, you know, obviously, Save Civic Stadium and Mr. Kraszelnik have been taking the lead on putting together a lot of the different initiatives here. Obviously, the stadium thing's there, I think they're also helping us lead the charge to identify an ownership group, which we would prefer be locally-based, or at least, the primary owners of that be locally-based, but we're not at that, we're not at that stage yet. So, no, we have not identified an ownership group. I know there are some that have expressed interest, and again, we've been working directly with Mr. Kraszelnik and his team, who have been very helpful, but there's still a little ways to go. We're not at that stage yet, and we'll need to be at that stage if we're going to, we're going to move forward.
What's, what is your understanding of the timeline to get to that stage?
Um, well, realistically, I, well, we still have, from our standpoint, it depends, you know, a team that would be launching in 2012, if that group wasn't together and prepared to, you know, make the commitment to acquire the franchise and really ramp up by August or September of this year, we missed the cycle for 2013. We're not in a rush, this league's going to be around for a while. So, the most important thing is that this is done properly, and if that makes this a 2013 or even a 2014 initiative, we're willing to wait for that. 2012, obviously, some people would have to come, come forward pretty quickly, and everybody get on the same page to be able to do that. We have different groups that we speak with, most groups that approach us typically are interested in a particular market. There are several individuals that have not, that say, well, I'm interested in investing in a franchise, typically not as a lead investor, but, you know, just in a situation we think would work. And we also have some pretty extensive connections in a company that we have on Retainer called Bezix Sports, that's based in the UK, that's working with us with several UK-based teams, two Premier League teams and one lower division team, to identify markets where a USL Pro affiliate, US-based affiliate team could work. So, that'll be a facet of this league, which will happen here in the next year or two as well, too. So, we've got one, definitely going to happen for 2012. There's a number of different ways to get to that, I'm not, you know, as we sit here on this call, I'm, we're not in a position to be able to say, well, we're 30 days off or we're 16 days off. I think we're a little longer than that off, to be very frank. We'd love to have it happen for 2012, but we'll stick with this as long as it takes to put the right group together, as long as there's a commitment to get this stadium to where it needs to be.
Thank you. Lastly, in your 25 years of experience with, with the league's long history, have you seen a team come together this quickly, or is it much more likely that we're 2013 or 2014?
So, we're certainly within the realistic window of making that be able to happen. We've seen teams that have come together in the fall, you know, unless, and I, I mean, every circumstance is different, we just, we don't, and be successful, we just don't, that's not what we advocate. And we're, you know, we've, we've learned, as you said, we learned over 25 years, that it's better to be prudent, and it's better sometimes to wait than, you know, sometimes it's tempting to want to move forward in the next year and get that going, but that may not be the smart move for the medium to long term. So, again, very patient with this. 2013 certainly is probably more realistic than 2012, but the last thing we want to do is sit here and rule out 2012, when there's plenty of time for that to be able to happen. The way we see it, we've got about a four-month window in which if all the things come together and come together perhaps even quicker than we would anticipate, that we could move forward. The other part of that is, if the ownership group can come together and the venue, Civic Stadium, for instance, isn't prepared, and that ownership group is prepared to play somewhere on a temporary basis for the 2012 season, it's important for them to get up and launch, then, then we would support that. Obviously, we've got to look at all the circumstances, what's the temporary venue, where is it located in relation to the Civic Stadium? It's just not a, not a blanket yes, but I still think there's time before we need to say, no, it's, this is too rapid a pace to move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the caller? Yes, surely.
This is John, Ray City Manager. Can you remind us again, where are other metro areas of this size, or of our similar demographics that have a team, US Pro team, that we can take a look at?
Yes, sir. And I understand the market size to be about, just right around 300,000 in the market, and you can tell me if I'm just way off, because I'm going to answer the question based on that. That's my understand, am I, anyone, could someone tell me if I'm way off?
That's probably, that's probably reasonable.
So, in that zone, the best markets, and I'm, you know, we'll say plus or minus 50 to 100,000 are Dayton, Ohio, Charleston, South Carolina, Wilmington, North Carolina is slightly smaller, Rochester, New York is slightly higher. So, while we have markets like Charlotte, New York, Los Angeles, Orlando, we also have markets that are much more comparable to the size of Eugene, Oregon, where teams have been, and there's no, the big markets, it's not a case where the big markets are successful and the little markets aren't, or vice versa. Charleston Battery has been around for almost the whole 25 years that we have, and are one of the most successful minor league soccer franchises in the country. We've got a new team in Dayton this year, the Wilmington Hammerheads in Wilmington, North Carolina have also done it. We tend, in our league, I'd say the rule tends to be, a big fish in a relatively small pond is, is the most successful model. With that said, we had tremendous success in markets like Portland, Seattle, and Vancouver when we had teams there. So, I think that's one of the unique facets about our league, unlike, you know, Major League Soccer, where small-market teams can be very successful, and there's an economically viable model. Now, if we're talking about a market of less than 100,000 people, it's just, it's not going to work. We have lower divisions in which those teams can be there. But if we're talking over a quarter of a million people, we think it's not only, the USL Pro model probably works better in markets with a quarter of a million to a half a million people than it would in a market with 4 million people. So, we think, that's one of the reasons we think Eugene's right in, right in, you know, sort of fits the profile, the type of market and, and, you know, expansion place that we're looking for.
Mike, did you have another question?
No, just for Alan in...
Okay, so I just want to be sure that if we've asked him all the questions we have, then we can let him go. So, any other questions? I see none. I thank you so much for being available to us, I'm Mary.
sort of fits the profile, the type of market and, and, you know, expansion place that we're looking for.
Mike, did you have another question?
No, just for Alan and George.
Okay, so I just want to be sure that if we've asked him all the questions we have, then we can let him go. So, any other questions? I see none. I thank you so much for being available to us. I'm Mayor Kitty Piercy, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Mayor and Counselor, we're grateful for the time. We will do this anytime you'd like us to, either online or offline, you know, please let us know whatever we can do to help continue to facilitate this.
But you can stay in line if you want. We're moving on to a conversation among the counselors.
Thank you very much.
All right. So Betty was in the queue to ask a question or make a comment.
To make a comment, I think this is really amazing work. I think we should thank Alan and George for pulling this together. I think it's fantastic, and I do think it's a big, will be a big service to the community if we, now and in the future, if we can do this, if we can do something like this at least. I think there are people all over the country who would, will be amazed and admiring if we're able to save this old stadium.
Thanks. Any other comments, Mike?
Well, I had questions really more than comments here. And one, I, I enjoyed hearing about this plan. It looks very similar to one that I worked on a couple of years ago, too, with regard to how we might save this stadium and save this particular area of town for this use. And in doing so, I've talked a bit with the Y, and I know that you folks have as well, and I know that you've met with them the other day, and I, my understanding is that they've clearly identified that they don't want to participate in moving forward with this proposal, but I saw that presented on the screen as a possibility. So, I'm wondering what's occurred that I don't know about in the interim?
You're right. And I think we went to one of those first Civic meetings about two years ago, so this has been a long time that this has been percolating. With respect to the Y, I think.
Dave's here, right here.
He's here, but, and he can speak for himself, but when George and I met with him, we asked him if he'd be willing to join us, and we talked about that in the mayor's committee as well. And very understandably, he has a proposal, and he's riding a horse that he's on with, and he's going to stay on that horse. And, and so he went down a different path. If, if 4J Board were to pick this proposal and over the other two, it's, it's not certain, but there, and there's certainly some big hurdles that the Y would have to do in order to participate in this. But what we wanted to do was leave enough space in the proposal, and that's why we came up with the idea of a right, a first refusal to the Y to be able to develop there. Their biggest hurdle is the problem of getting capital to build the building. They don't have the 16 million bucks it takes to build the new building, and they'd have to do a fundraising campaign, but that was, that's long-term and problematic. So, what they do is went and got, and looked around for a local firm to do that. None were available last year, and so maybe that, things could change and that could, could occur if, if the circumstances were different.
My question was if something had changed in the interim between the time they said they weren't interested in, in now and between them, this participation.
Dave's riding, he's got his horse, he's riding, he's just sticking.
So, then, another part of, my question would be, I didn't hear specifically identified where the city's portion of participating in this comes in. I mean, I didn't hear it in specifics. My understanding of it, from what I'm hearing, is that we would either help with a large chunk of the purchase price, and I was wondering, are you still maintaining that that should come from park bonds and that we should then not build the Santa Clara Community Park we've promised in the process?
Two, two things on that. One is, at the very beginning, what we said was we wanted to present the sketch and the vision about it and the ideas, and then come back to you at a second meeting with more of the details. So, a lot of those details haven't yet been worked out. But we wanted to see if the vision made sense to Counsel and have a conversation about how we proceed with that.
So, you're not presenting the exact?
So, we don't have that exactly nailed down yet. So, we've still got some time before the presentation to 4J, and that's, but we wanted to not get ahead of ourselves. We wanted to check in with you guys before we did it.
Is it possible?
So, and there's, there's Plan A and Plan B in terms of, of how you, how we would do the acquisition. Plan A was a lease, which wouldn't require any upfront money. And Plan B, which is a conversation we should have, which would be potentially using the park bond money, is the same pool of money that we used to buy the Ridgeline Arley Park would be, I think, the logical place to do it, and there's $8 million left in that. And that would not affect the Santa Clara River Road Park, that money set aside. This is that pool of money that we had, that was $10 million that we would, that we were going to use to buy all these little parks around the community. That was a strategy that we're not sure is going to work.
I see. Then, you mentioned the Jacob family's involvement, and I'm wondering, do they have an interest in either the ownership group or in putting up capital to purchase this?
There, there have been numerous conversations with, Nate Jacob himself is actually interested in doing that. His family may be, that remains to be seen. I'm not going to speak for them. There are other prominent business people that have also been, have expressed interest in being part of that Save Civic Works new nonprofit that could, would manage and help fundraise for this and participate in that, either with large donations or with helping it get off the ground. And, and so that group would be reconstituted as the new, new entity. It wouldn't just be the Save Civic people moving forward, because that, that probably doesn't make sense.
With my last minute, I would like to say that I appreciate the work that you guys have done. I, too, felt a desire to, to work on this. Of course, I did it some time ago, but I think it's an important idea. But the challenge is that we're kind of short-circuiting the legitimacy of another process that's already in place, and I have some concerns about that. And even more of a concern for me is some of the comments that I've made about some of the proposals. One of the pieces of heartburn that I get is, for a couple of years now, we've had this process of Envision Eugene and the ECLAP process that says, we need 400 acres of commercial property, and we've been set, we've been told, let's not add that to the UGB, let's develop within our community, let's redevelop 400 acres within the UGB and specifically in the core. This property is 11 blocks from Dead Center and downtown, and if we're saying we can't redevelop this commercially, then where in the world are we going to find the other 400 acres? And it leaves me really with some heartburn around that whole Envision Eugene process.
Okay, other comments? George?
Well, I, Mike, I'd just like to point out that, you know, the original purchase, the reason people bought that, and it was actually, I believe, it was in the deed, it's when the deed was transferred, was that this would always be used for recreation in perpetuity. Now, of course, 4J owns it, the courts said, no, they can do whatever they want. I'm just saying it's.
I was talking about the comments people made.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Well, you know, there's nothing to say that, once this is acquired by Save Civic and the redevelopment starts, there's nothing to say that some commercial development couldn't go there on, on part of the property as, as, as a second, you know, as a stopgap.
So, what I have heard thus far is obviously that George and Alan have interest in this, Betty has interest in this, Mike supports in concept, but has other concerns. Andrea?
So, I just have a couple of comments, and I guess I would like to say good work, but I kind of feel like it's, you know, like backwards, so, but still good work. I'm not totally opposed to you all continuing down your path and working and presenting it to 4J because they are the decision-makers. My only challenge, I mean, I personally really feel like it's bad governance, but that aside, I'm willing to let this continue in process. My only concern is that we, the city, John, is this going to, so, in your vision of how you guys are going to continue the work and work out the details, how much staff time are you going to need for this? Because I, I'm, I'm really aware of Counsel asking staff to do things and then us not actually moving on it or, or it not happening. And I just, you know, staff works really hard, and we're asking Sarah to do two jobs, and I know other people are kind of in that same boat. And so, I just want to be, I want to know, is how much staff time, how much does it cost the city if we continue to this? I mean, do you have a vision of how much effort you'll need by, or support you'll need by staff?
So far, it's been quite minimal. I think it's only been not very much time at all. I think moving forward is when you start to nail down some of the details, and that's where staff needs to be, and John in particular needs to be involved in how this might work. So, I don't suspect it's going to be an enormous amount of work. We're not asking them to develop, you know, spreadsheets and do all this other stuff. It's more like meeting and conceptualizing and figuring out things as opposed to doing detailed assessment work, because most of that's already been done. It's really about how does the city fit into this model and what would the role and, and what would the city's role be? John?
I think it does depend on the level of detail. If, if you're asking us to evaluate their pro forma, that'll take some more time. I have some questions on that, but depends on if the Counsel, depends on what you do, will depend on how much work we do on some of these things. If it's deciding what is the, the financial role of the city and how we would meet that role, there is some time that we'd have to devote to that on, I don't know if that's a lease, or we talk about a, being a guarantor on dollars, and what does that mean? So, there would, depending on the level of detail, there would be some time for us.
That would be after, so that kind of work, though, would be done after 4J makes its decision, not before?
Depending on what you want in order to provide to 4J, right?
I think you actually need to get to that level of detail to present that to 4J in order to make it credible.
I, from my perspective, if you were going to move down with a proposal, I would want to have done a little bit of the financial analysis on the city's impact before you, before 4J makes a decision on something that the Counsel recommends they make a decision on. So, that would be my, my suggestion. It will take some work to do that. I couldn't tell you how much work that will do. That will take some work on staff to do that.
I'm, you know, I'm really challenged by that, because I just feel like, you know, here's something that really wasn't identified, isn't in our work plan, hasn't been in our budget, and, you know, I'd like to get a grasp of a number so that I can at least tell my constituents, how much, you know, when people are asking me, you know, why are we even doing this and how much money is it costing us, I would like to be able to have an answer for them.
Scope? We can make a, we can go back and do some analysis and get back to the Counsel on how much I would think it's going to take for.
I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not all for this, but it's, but I'm willing to allow it to continue on even, you know, just for the sake of the work that's already been done and for the fact that there is interest from the community. So, I, yeah, I would like a scope. I would like to know how much so that we can respond to our constituents.
I've got Pat and George and Mike in the queue, and Alan. Okay, Pat.
Thank you. You know, I have a lot of interest in soccer, a little bit of a background. I coached at Springfield when it was a club sport in the early days of boys' soccer in the area back in the 70s. So, I've seen it grow from little tiny seed to really, really big. I'm convinced that this town could support the team. I love the concept of the team coming, but I don't see that really as being a huge part of this conversation, other than maybe a part of the business plan down the road. Once again, I fall back on the fact that this is in 4J's court at this point, and that they have the decisions to make. And while certain counselors can make recommendations or suggestions, I don't believe as a Counsel it's our place to actually weigh in on this at this point in time. I think we've said, from my perspective, we've said what we're going to say, we've done the diligence that we said that we would do, and 4J has welcomed to look at the work that has been done. But I believe they have a decision to make ahead of them, and the decision has to take a lot into account, including what Counselor Clark brings up about Envision Eugene, looking for opportunity citing inside the current urban growth boundary, so we don't have to look outside the UGB to find parcels of this size or similar size to make the kind of development that, that we do need in, in our future commercial plan for the city. So, at this point, really, my, my best wishes to 4J, they have some deliberations, and I'm certainly willing to weigh in toward them in the way that I'm, as a Counsel. I think we've done our work.
George Pauling?
I don't think I could have said it any better than Pat just said it. I feel exactly the same way. And if we were to move forward, and it's a big, if we were to move forward with looking at any more information on this proposal, I would request that we have a full Counsel presentation by the other two proposers, so we get a, a good, even presentation to all of us at the same time as to what the other proposals were. I mean, you know, we've got the one report from Master Development, we've got bits and pieces from newspaper articles, but if we're going to go forward with this, then before we do that, I'd like to get a full presentation from the other proposers. And then, you know, this is nothing that's, that's just popped up on us in the last six, eight months or whatever. This is a conversation about what's going to happen to Civic Stadium for years, even before the M's lease ran out or they decided to move out. So, I mean, all these organizations, the soccer team, the pro soccer teams, everybody else has had a chance at lining up to get financing in place, get an idea in place. And this, like Pat said, this is 4J's program, and I think we should, you know, like you said, wish 4J the best of luck on, on their, their selection process. And I do want to thank Alan and George for the, the work they've done on the presentation here.
I've got Mike and Alan and Chris and George Brown in the queue. Before I go to that, I guess my comment about this would be that we were involved early on along with a lot of partners on trying to keep the M's at, at Civic, and we were unsuccessful in doing that, and they moved, and then we've been through this, the process that we've been through. I guess the real question, because it's sort of a chicken and egg thing, is for the, for 4J to consider the Save Civic option in any, in any of the possible variations, they have to know that there's some there there with the city. And so, for us to say, we don't want to say there's any there there because it's your decision, 4J. 4J can't, unless they know that we have some interest and investment, they can't even make that kind of decision or choice. So, it's a, it's kind of a circular thing that you have to, and the only thing that I can say is that you, enough of you have to have enough interest in this, that you're, that you're willing to take the leap to say that you're, you're willing to look at that kind of, some kind of investment, some kind of lease, some kind of whatever it is you decide. If that's what you, if you think that property and this, and or this vision is worth the city stepping up to, you have to sort of indicate that, or we're sort of stuck in this circular place. And I, I don't think it's helpful to 4J, and I, so, because they, they, I guess the message they would get is, you're not interested enough to, to do anything, and if they're interested, fine. I mean, if that is what you want to convey, then that's what you want to, I, I just want to point, point that out to you, that that's, by not doing something, you're conveying a message as well. So, just for you to, just for you to think about as you continue to deliberate this. Mike?
Yeah, one quick question first. Is there new information as a part of this proposal you've just made that 4J didn't get in their initial Save Civic proposal? Other, other than the city's potential financial participation?
City's potential, and then also revision of what the lease payment would look like.
So, it was all essentially the financing, the financing part, but the business plan part, 4J's already seen, right?
Correct. And if you remember, the big part of their scoring was on the financial benefit to the 4J. And what, what Safe Civic did, proposed exactly the same amount of, of lease payment that the M's paid, which was $70,000. But you saw from the pro forma, there's room to move that up, so that revision can occur.
Well, this is an important question for the community, and I worked on this a couple of years ago. I went to legislators and asked them if it was possible to get money from the state in order for the district to have the money to rebuild the stadium. I've worked on this, trying to get the University of Oregon to work together with them, fundraising campaigns in order to do this, so that we had an opportunity to save this stadium. It's an important thing to do. But at this late hour, my concern is that our actions may have negative consequences, and that's what I want to avoid. That's what I'm concerned about. We've seen a history of that in our community where the Counsel overreaches or the Counsel, past Counsel majorities may have, with good intention, created outcomes that they didn't intend, whether we're talking about hospitals or holes in our downtown. And I'd like to see us avoid that by, you know, scaring off one of these potential folks, and then we have an empty stands that are sitting there for years that's a fire trap and a potential hazard. So, I want us to move really, really, really carefully if we're going to take a look at any of these options seriously. So, I guess I'd ask in the scope of work, Mr. Manager, if what we could get back is any potential negative consequences of our continued involvement. of our continued involvement. So, what happens if, you know, one of the particip, or one of the RFP folks decides that our stretching out this process, or our participation negates theirs? I mean, what are the potential downsides to our continued involvement? Thank you.
Okay, Alan?
So, first of all, we agreed to and are sticking to working within the process and within 4J's timeline. None of the other proposals are gonna go anywhere in that timeframe. They've already been informed of the timeline, and they didn't go away. So, whatever we do isn't gonna make either of those proposals go away, so I think that's not an issue. This is kind of bottom of the ninth inning kind of baseball here, but we are gonna try, we're all working within the existing process and within 4J's timeline. They said specifically, we'll, we'll, we need some more time. They've got a lot of things on their plate, too, as we did, which is why we couldn't address this until now, but they've got things on their plate. So, they stretched that out to June 1st, and with proposals that can be revised, existing proposals. They didn't ask for any new proposals or anybody. The three proposals, the only people that are playing in the game, ours would be to go in with Civic Stadium and revise their proposal. And if you look at the three proposals, they're all very, very different visions about this piece of property. The Masters one is a commercial development, the Y is mostly, the Y with, the big chunk of it is housing, student housing, and this proposal is a community and family sports complex. Completely different. So, what, what we're asking for is a little bit more time and a little bit more, and a little buy-in to move to the next step. So, I agree that the public should weigh in this. That's why we ask that the Save Civic be on the already scheduled public hearing for the 25th, so people can come and address them, and I think this is a good idea. Second is that we go and work on this in more detail. I'd love to have some staff time, work with John, to look through the pro forma, and look to have some people play out, and what's role. So, we'd have to have some more detail. And then come back to the council. If the council at that point says this doesn't make any sense, then we're done. If the, if the council says this does make sense, and this is a good idea, then, then we would present it to 4J. But it's gotta, 4J needs to hear from the majority of the council that they think this is something that they could support. If we decide right now that that's not true, I don't think George or I are gonna put any more effort into this, because it dies. If people want to see more detail about it and see if this makes a viable plan, which I think it does, and it's an exciting opportunity for this community to have a professional soccer team and revitalize and reinvent Civic Stadium, I think that that's, that's worth moving forward. So, we do, as the mayor said, need to make a decision from the council. It's not that we're done and 4J gets to go off, because we have to, we have to be a joint partner in the Save Civic revised proposal, within the context of the existing process and within their own timeframe. Otherwise, it doesn't make, it won't go forward. And then, like Pat said, it's, it's 4J's decision. They're gonna make the decision, not us.
Chris?
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it's already been said. I think Pat really said a lot of what I would've said. We have a, where I work, we always talk about scope creep, where you have a certain job, and then gradually begins to creep into other areas, and what I don't want is a role creep, where our involvement suddenly begins to impinge on 4J. And I think that's already been said, and I don't think anybody here is proposing to do that, and I appreciate the reassurance that we would not interfere with their process. It is their process, and I wouldn't want us inadvertently to allow any of the other proposals to expire, or to use the sports metaphor, let the clock run out on them. I want to keep everything in play.
Wow, three metaphors in one sentence.
Yeah, that's why, in one sentence.
He's been really quiet.
He's captain metaphor. Well, and the degree to which we are involved, I think really does require us to be very thoughtful and deliberate, and I really appreciate what City Manager is saying about, I need to look at this really closely, because if I am going to be asked to be involved, I have to absolutely know exactly what the impact of that is, and what it would involve, and how it would work. For me, this is really, and you said it, this is really about, do we want to bring a professional sports team to town? That's, that's at its core what we're really talking about. And so, that's really what the, what the decision point is versus the other proposals. And I keep saying it will be for 4J to decide, and I do appreciate the amount of work you've put into this. If nothing else, the energy and the passion, I think, is pretty admirable. You're very, you're very excited about this, and I like that. And for my part, I'm interested in hearing more about it, but I really have to be very cautious before I start putting skin in the game, that I know that that skin isn't gonna have a problem at some point later on. And so, I guess what I'm saying in summary is, I'm very cautious, and I, and I don't want any of the other options to suffer because of what we're doing, and I think that's kind of what we've been saying all along, but we just have to be very careful.
Okay, George Brown, and then Pat, and then Andrea, and then Betty.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in December, when I asked for a work session, the general idea was to try to save Civic Stadium, and the thinking has moved quite a bit forward since then. And every T has not been crossed, and every I has not been dotted, that's for sure. We need a little more time to hone down and refine, get a little more specific with Save Civic Stadium, how we could make all this work. And I've heard a lot of worst fears being voiced the last half hour, and, you know, I understand, I understand all of those, those points of view. What we're asking for is another work session, a little more time to refine all this. Whatever we come up in a public hearing, in another work session, at which time, we hope to have a plan that makes sense, that is credible, one that 4J would be able to accept, would be on a more level field with the other, in other words, it would be at a credible level with the other proposals, which I'm not sure that it is right now. But we fully understand that the product has, whatever product we come up with, it has to make sense to the city and the taxpayers. You know, we can't ask them to, we can't propose some crazy thing, fiscal or financial, or, you know, any kind of sense at all. It's gotta be a sensible plan. So, that's, that's what we're asking for, is a little more time to refine the idea, take it to the next level of detail.
So, we just have about 12 minutes left, and this is what I, and I've got Pat and Andrea and Betty in the queue. But what I would like to ask you all to address as quickly as you're able to right now, is to say, are you willing or not willing to have another work session or discussion?
Or do, for scope?
I think that you have to answer that question. And then the second question is, I think, when you're asking for a public hearing, we don't usually have what you call an official public hearing, unless you have an official proposal. You could have a town meeting, town hall kind of format, and get, and get input. And so, I would suggest that you all very quickly weigh in. Do you want another work, are you willing to have, even if you don't want, are you willing to have another work session for further discussion? And are you willing to have a town hall, so that people can come and, and express their pluses and minuses and thoughts about this? And City Manager, do you have anything? Because that's just mine, and I'll ask you what you think.
Yeah, if you're gonna want another work session, it'd be good to at least know that you're gonna want that. We can work through the scope of work. Late April isn't gonna work for us at all, because, you know, our budget presentation is the 27th, and the same people that are working on that will also be working on this. And so, and they'll also work on the income tax. And so, late April won't work. We would have to do something in May, to schedule that, and it could be, I think, maybe the 9th of May or something like that. We can try to do that. The, the one caveat I'll throw out there is, again, the same people are working on all these same things. So, if we get into the budget process, you know, as we've talked about, the budget will be, I don't think it'll be particularly complicated this year. The more complicated we make the budget this year, it detracts from other efforts that are going on simultaneously. So, it's just sort of a caution.
And so, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna walk you around the table, and I'll start with the people that were in the line in the first place, and see how you feel about an additional work session and/or a town meeting of some kind. So, let's start with Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the manager, which I'll put in writing, as regarding how does this differ from any other business decision from a private party versus the 4J School District? I'll pose that in writing. I'm not adverse to another work session, although I don't necessarily feel it's urgent. I understand the time constraints. Town hall would probably be a better venue.
Okay, so yes and yes?
Yes and yes.
Okay, Andrea?
So, I have a question about, can you make, how do we make sure that the money for Santa Clara River Road Park is left there? I mean, I just kind of feel really strongly about that. And I'm either, also not adverse to another work session, but, you know, I feel like I'm getting, we're kind of, you know, kind of getting pressured here to give a direction, and I don't know which direction I'm going in. And I do think it's up to 4J, but I'm not opposed to having another work session, but I really kind of feel like we're getting pressured here.
But your answers are reluctant, yes?
Very reluctant.
Okay, got it. All right, and then we got Betty.
Okay, first, I'd like to say I think we should be daring rather than careful, and that 4J works for the people. It doesn't, this isn't their, this plan doesn't belong to the school board. It belongs to the citizens of Eugene, and that we should, as elected officials, should be looking out for the long-term interest of the citizens of Eugene, that we know that vast numbers of people want to preserve this historic structure. To me, that's the most important thing. I'm not a sports fan, but I think the plan that's been presented sounds really great, and would appeal to large numbers of people. And I see nothing wrong with our, with our hindering a process that is wrong. And I do follow, may I make a motion? I move that we have a work, another work session followed by a town hall.
Well...
You don't want me to make a motion?
Why don't you just, I think everybody's okay with it, I mean, this being done in this way.
Okay.
If we run up against some, a tie, or people would strongly held differences of opinion, you can put it to a motion and go from there. So, let's, I know, I'm gonna go to Chris.
I've always been of the opinion that knowledge is not a dangerous, or a bad thing. And so, if another work session enhances our knowledge, it's not making a decision. I'm fine with a work session or even a town hall. I would prefer to have information for me before I, you know, go to a town hall. I think even folks at a town hall would appreciate that, so that would be the order I would prefer. And I'm, I'm hearing what the City Manager is saying in terms of how easily they could pull that together, but I'm not opposed to more knowledge. I'm not opposed to more information. It's, it's helpful to decisions if and when it comes time to make one.
Mike?
Yeah, I agree with Chris. I'm not at all opposed to more information. Might, I would just say, Betty, that it's, it's wiser and better for looking out for the long-term interest of our community if we're careful rather than daring, and that's how we've gotten into problems before. But I would say that I agree with Andrea, that the, a part of any deal that I would even ever consider would be a process where you absolutely guarantee all the money that's necessary for development and purchase of the Santa Clara Community Park that we've promised those folks since 1998. The other thing is that we've been asked to please be patient, because we absolutely guaranteed after two postponements that we'd have Envision Eugene done by February. So, are we now putting that out farther to do this? And if so, that's a real problem for me, because we've been asked to be patient over and over and over again while we put that work off, and we passed the deadline some time ago. So, I'm saying there are other things...
It's scheduled.
That we, I would hate to see us be bumping off if that's the case, and I'd like to hear from the manager. And the other part is that I'd like to see the scope of work first, before deciding on another work session.
City Manager, do you want to say anything?
I can appreciate that. My, my concern will be...
To do the work, just, what's it gonna take?
The next, I guess Monday is when you can decide that, so we can do a scope of work. If everybody chooses Monday, we can decide whether or not you want to move forward on that. There are a few days of non-work going on at that point, so, and that would be one of my concerns with that, so.
Up to his particular request.
Right. I mean, as far as analyzing the information, if we're not gonna get started, if we're really gonna have a work session in May, that's not a lot of time, given other things that are going on. And so, the more time we have, regardless of the complete scope of work, and we'll come back with a complete scope of work, but if there's some general consensus that you're gonna want a work session, we're gonna want to get started really soon to at least start the work that's gonna go on, or we won't. Won't be able to do it. The second question I have is the scope of the work session. You've heard having the other proposers come in and make presentations, so that'll be important to know whether or not that's, you want something around that.
Just to finish, the reason I ask for that is because why do the scope of work if we already know we're gonna have the work session?
But I think part of it will be is, the scope of work, I think, will define the work session. There's some preliminary work we would start regardless of if the scope of work is this large or this large. We want to at least get started on this piece of it.
Andrea, you already said. George?
Well, ordinarily, you know, I too like, feel like the more information, the better, but at this point, I think we've got the information we need. I would be concerned, and not to slight city staff, but with everything else piled up on them, I would be really concerned about the quality of the product that would be presented to us, taking consideration the Envision Eugene, the tax, the city income tax, the budget, everything else. I think we're putting too much of a strain with too short of a notice on the city staff to come up with a quality product. Again, I don't mean to slight the staff. I think we've got a remarkable staff, but I think it's a little bit too much. And if there were to be a work session, I absolutely believe we need to have a full presentation from all the proposers, so we can have a side-by-side comparison of the different, different options to choose from.
So, that we're not taking sides.
So, you're next, George, okay?
Well, Mayor, it looks like that, I think I'm the only one that's gonna say no on the work session, so, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Okay, all right, so.
Still going this way?
I'm a no on the scope of work.
All right, go ahead. Alan?
He's already got Betty.
So, obviously, I'm in favor of a work session. Maybe I can help with the scope of work. I think the scope of work associated with city staff would, would be two things. One would be evaluating the pro forma and doing an analysis of that, and seeing how good of a business plan this is. So, that takes some time. And the second one would be brainstorming about the city's role and kind of getting towards clearly defining that. I think those are the two things that really are necessary for this to move forward. I think those are kind of encompassing most of the issues that are out there.
Which one?
The second one is that mindful that, we said we'd work within this 4J's process, and 4J set a process that ends June 1st, and so, they want to have proposals, or presentations of proposals on May 16th. So, everything needs backup from there. That's a short timeframe, granted. And, and as far as the parks fund money, again, what we were proposing was Plan A is a lease, a backstop might be, Plan B using the parks money, but it would definitely not use the money that's dedicated towards the River Road, Santa Clara. That $4 million is already set aside. It's not the same pool of money that we're talking about that we took to buy the Arley property, and it's not the same money that where we dedicated that $600,000 that...